Okay, we hardy few. Let's begin our Iowa City City Council Work Session for Tuesday, October the 3rd, 2017. The first topic is to review our remaining pending work session topics. And by way of introduction, I should say that Jeff and I had a conversation about this, I don't know, a week ago, and thought it would be fruitful to go through the remaining work session, or, yeah, pending work session topics and see if we could winnow them down and kind of clear off some of the, some of the items, pretty, hmm, what's the right word? Well, quickly. So anyhow, that's where we're at. So, we can go through them one by one from the top and see what folks have to say. Jeff, do you want to talk us through this, or should I?
I'm happy to elaborate as needed, but I think you can just work your way down.
Okay, so I'll just read the description of the topic and Jeff's recommendation, I guess, and we'll go from there. So the first one is significantly improve the council's and staff's ability to engage with diverse populations on complex or controversial topics. And Jeff indicates things we've already done and recommends that we identify specific topics for the staff to address and remove the topic from the pending list.
So I would agree with the removal. My only question is, is where are we at on the STAR rating system that we talked about using?
Well, we are using it.
We're certified. We were certified last year, maybe a year and a half ago, if I'm...
In March, I think.
Okay. And there's a recertification process every couple...
Two years.
Every two years. So, at this point, staff has identified, based on our last score, areas that we think we can improve upon. We've taken some steps so that when we reapply, we think we can get a stronger score. An example would be the open space study that we're doing now, the open space plan through Parks and Rec. That'll put us in a position to address some of the point categories that we weren't able to last time. And there's several other areas that staff's working to improve upon as well.
I guess the reason why I ask that is for my, from my feedback, having that information as it relates to this particular topic, I think we can remove it, but I think that if it is housed, or we come back through that lens, I think I'd be okay with it from a measurable standpoint.
I should add to that, that we are participating in the STAR's annual dashboard index. So in addition to recertifying every couple of years, we submit data on 21 key indicators to STAR every year. You can actually go to the STAR website and compare our 21 indicators with any of the other participating cities. So there's an annual component to that as well.
In his commentary, Jeff identifies various things we have already done. So if you are, council members are aware of other things we've done that you want to highlight, maybe you could state them, but what Jeff identifies in his commentary is the Economic Development Committee's focus groups concerning TIF, also the fact that we televise the Economic Development Committee meetings from this room, enhanced video work on current topics, the stuff that Channel 4 has been doing really beautifully, and other specific strategies that are identified in the strategic plan update. But are there other things that immediately come to your minds that...
Hopefully you found the hieronymous one-page summary that Wendy pulled together is helpful. That, I mean, I think that's another example of us attempting to break down a pretty complex development agreement with TIF funding into simpler terms and graphics. Extremely helpful.
I think it's one of those areas we just have to keep kind of on the top of our mind as we're going through things and thinking about, is there, you know, are there better or different ways to communicate with the public so they have a better understanding? Or if they're controversial issues that we, you know, take that time to find ways to engage with the public and try and work through those issues. I don't know that I see a need to keep it on the work session list at this point.
I would agree.
Okay. Hi, Pauline. Yeah. Okay, so I guess we're done with that one. All right, thanks. The next one is to identify an achievable goal for the provision of affordable housing in Iowa City and implement strategies to achieve this goal. Jeff explains the difficulty in defining goals, especially with regard to, where's the words I'm after? Cost-burden households, you're going into great detail about that.
Well, we can do units, we could create a units created type of metric and every year look at that. And Tracy can explain this much better than I can. We've had this conversation. It's difficult because even the units created, there's variables in there that can be misleading. So if you have a 10-year affordability period compared to a 30-year affordability period, that's going to drive your costs up. If you're looking at a 30 percent median income target versus an 80 percent, that's all going to influence the cost per unit. So you might do five units that have long affordability times for extremely low-income individuals, and that metric may not look good compared to 20 units at 10-year affordability for 80 percent. So it's that, it's that meaningful metric that we're after. And Ashley and Simon and I were talking about this this morning, Tracy and I have talked about it. I think there's some indexes out there that we can look at to see how the overall indicators are moving and the percentage of cost-burden households. I know is something that Tracy thinks is very important. That's one example of something that we can track. So hopefully all the changes that we're making and the additional funding that we're putting towards this issue, we start to see that needle move a little bit. But it's, we struggle to come back to you and say, "We should target X number of units." I think, I think that's very difficult for us to do and have it be meaningful.
Well, I can say that I understand that, and it would be especially challenging. But I think it would be very helpful to have reported to us information about trends in the overall affordability of housing in Iowa City, having to do with prices and rents in the city and what the trends are. Because I certainly hear concerns that really are about the overall affordability and that it, the problem descends down the income ladder and becomes especially severe the lower your income is. But still, I hear concerns about the overall affordability of housing. So I think it'd be helpful to have those indicators reported to us on a regular basis.
Related to that, Jim, the other thing that I would like clarification is, is the relationship to affordability and supply. A lot of people have discussed the need to increase the supply as a way of enhancing affordability, but I think for me it would get, be helpful to sort of assess really what that downward slope is, if at all, if that's readily available information.
I don't know.
I mean, unless that's too complicated, because that's directly what you're talking about, Jim, because we often hear that a lot of our discussions, that we need to increase the supply of housing and that that will have a downward pressure. But we've never really been precise about what that downward pressure is or where that data comes from.
So can we do this, Jeff? Can we have y'all, and I guess I should be speaking to council first, can we do, it sounds like we need, it sounds like we need a work session on what we want to see? I mean, basically, I hear a couple of things that I actually agree with, but ultimately, I feel like, you know, maybe staff can prepare us with a memo as far as a couple of different indicators, and then we can have a conversation as far as, are there additional things that we want to look at in view as well? Because going back to your point, Jim, I think that all your points are necessary. And so, you know, I was more thinking about what you were saying and Ashley was, Rockney was saying, like having some type of, almost some quarterly status report that's associated either within our strategic planning packet or maybe separately. But I think we need to talk about exactly what we're asking of staff before we move forward.
And that's what we're doing. We're preparing for that. So when you do your next strategic plan, we hope to present with you at that, right at the outset, these indicators. And really, to be fair to you all, you asked for this with your last strategic plan and staff didn't, we didn't deliver, we didn't get as far as we needed to with the metrics. But we are looking at about six or seven different community health indicators, environmental, public safety, housing affordability, the economy, and trying to come up with about a dozen indicators that have data sources that are updated on a regular basis that we could present to you with those strategic plan updates in the future. So I think, Kingsley, we're already doing what you're looking for, and we would suggest that we present those to you when you start your strategic plan discussions. And then depending on where you take your strategic plan, you may want to modify those indicators a little bit. I will say, most of the data is updated annually, at best. It's rare to find a data source that's updated quarterly, but they may be updated at different periods throughout the year. So if you're getting quarterly updates, you might notice a change in a couple of indicators.
Yeah, I would say in addition to the indicators, which sound like a good idea, kind of a yearly checkup, you know, taking the temperature and so forth, if not establishing goals, at least establishing or reporting on our achievements, I think is a useful metric. You know, we've generated X number of dwellings, you know, that are considered affordable by one standard. We've created X number of workforce housing units, and so on and so forth, just so that we all understand, you know, what, what we've done. And I think we have been doing that. It may not be consolidated in one location, though.
It is, it just hasn't been advanced to you yet. Tracy has submitted that to me, and I'm reviewing that, so it should be coming to you. And that's something we plan to do annually. And that'll be projects that we fund directly, that we fund indirectly through, say, the trust fund, or that are created because of some regulatory environment, like the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance. So stay tuned, it's coming.
Okay. Okay, are we comfortable with awaiting the material we get for our next strategic planning meeting and then perhaps deciding, well, deciding what we want to do in addition to whatever the information is that we get from Jeff? Okay, good enough. The next one is to determine the scope of a council-identified Complete Streets study. Jeff, why don't you summarize this? Jeff's kind of a long paragraph.
Yeah, the Complete Streets study came up when the strategic plan was created and ultimately when you were crafting your first budget as a council. At that time, there was no specific scope placed to that. We do have the Complete Streets line item, and we have been using that to fund various projects. For instance, the restriping on Sycamore, I believe, was funded in part with those dollars. We don't have any studies, per se, that are going on, other than the Gilbert Street study that's, that we just had a public meeting on. So if there is a corridor that you want to study, we just need to know that and begin to work that into our plan. Otherwise, we're moving forward with the Complete Streets line item and potentially additional funds in the upcoming budget to implement the Bike Master Plan. Essentially, that Bike Master Plan serves in large part as a Complete Streets study. And we want to make sure we start checking those projects off.
Okay, thoughts about this, folks?
Well, this was one that, you know, Jeff said goes back to the strategic plan. I can't even remember how we talked about it at that point, but I did generate a memo to council in March, trying to clarify, at least in my mind, where I thought we were going with this. And it really wasn't focused on looking at a particular transportation corridor. It was really suggesting that we needed to, as a council, discuss the Complete Streets policy, both in general terms. You know, we have a Complete Streets policy already in place. It would be a discussion of that. I think it would also be a discussion of what that policy means in terms of roadway design standards. You know, in that memo, I talked about a number of, a number of those standards and that, what we have now are, you know, in that reference that I had in that memo, four different standards to choose from. And I don't know where we, as a council or as a staff, stand on those. And so I felt it's important, particularly in that we're moving forward on a Bike Master Plan, which to me also kind of indirectly affects walkability, you know, kind of the pedestrian experience. We have a Park Master Plan, which is trying to emphasize connectivity, you know, that you live in a neighborhood, but, you know, you have these, these parks that you need to access. Can you safely access them? Safe routes to schools, a whole range of issues that I think, I'm really pleased we have, in the last year and a half, come up with some excellent plans. Now I think we're kind of moving into an implementation phase, and I feel the question of our street design is one where those standards are going to be very important in terms of ensuring that the, the network, say, we generate in our Bike Master Plan is in fact comfortable and safe. And then I think, the third thing I would say is we need to look at our performance measures, just as we're talking about on some of these other items. You know, I was just, it was kind of prompted from a listening post I went to with Jim. I was looking at the collision data from our last fiscal budget, and the, in the last year, there were over 2,400 collisions. Are we okay with that? I mean, do we feel that's just sort of business as usual? You know, one of the reasons I think we're advocating for road diets is there's pretty good documentation that collision rates go down. So I think we need to talk about what those metrics might be. I think clearly collisions would be one. Currently, we don't track that, to my knowledge. I mean, we report it, but we're not saying, "Oh, it's gone up," or "It's gone down," and, you know, what, what's the trend? So that was what I had in mind, and that's what I'm thinking could be the subject of the work session.
Yeah, and we do, we do track those, and we do use that data to influence work plans within the city. So if we see particular intersections that are problematic, that'll inform public improvements. So, you know, for example, the planned Mormon trek and the First Avenue Road Diets, there were some safety grants. We had to articulate the need for those, and you all have seen some of those presentations. I agree that, that those traffic numbers, we can, and that's part of the community indicators that we're looking at, in terms of our transportation network, that we can report those to you a little better than we have in the past.
So John, am I understanding you correctly, that you think we should keep this on our pending list of work session topics and that the, we should ask the staff to describe for us our current Complete Streets policy and be clear about what the roadway design standards are in association with that policy? Then maybe make sure that we are aware that there are other standards that could be applied, and we'd have to discuss whether we wanted to apply them. I mean, that's what I hear you saying. Is that, is that correct?
I think we, yeah, that there are, there are these different standards, and depending on the context of any particular project, you know, either one or another may apply. You know, and so I think it's something where I feel, as a council, right now, we're not really part of that discussion. You know, staff develops a design for a particular street and the, the design parameter, with the exception of the Gateway, the design parameters for that street are not really something that we have any involvement in. You know, our park, our, our streets projects don't go through any kind of commission process. They're simply generated through, through staff review without the participation of the...
Do you want us to be reviewing individual streets?
No, that's what I don't want. I want standards developed so that it's clear that what staff is applying to a particular project.
We can certainly come to you and say, and explain what our current standards are. If you take a peek ahead at your pending work session list, on the, is it the 17th, the next meeting, the mayor and I talked about having Ron Kennewick come up and talk about the SUDAS, State Urban Wide Design something standards. Forgot the A in that, Ron, sorry. The, but basically have him explain the review process that is currently underway internally here. It's pretty much done at the public works level and starting to filter into some of the other departments. But that's where our road design standards and several other design standards are incorporated into that SUDAS package. So our goal would be, for that work session is, one, we can tell you where we're currently at with road design standards; two, give you a very high-level overview of what SUDAS is and why we're going through that review; explain to you that we don't have to take SUDAS as it is presented, that we can make local amendments to it. So if you don't like a particular standard within the SUDAS document, if you think the Wayne Lanewiths are too wide, or whatever it may be, that we can modify those to match another standard. But, but just give you a sense of where we're at in that review and make sure that you're comfortable with the direction that we're going. So I think we'll spend considerable time at the next work session talking about that.
Is that what you're after?
I think so. I mean, it's, without knowing precisely what, how that conversation will play out. As I said, I view it as kind of a three-part discussion, reviewing the, our current Complete Streets policy, and then the question of what are the, our recommended roadway design standards, and then finally, the performance measures that we will employ going forward to ensure, it's all about, you know, we have a policy, but is there a disconnect in terms of how we implement our projects, which result in, you know, an outcome that's contrary to our policy? So, you know, everything has to be kind of aligned so that we are in a, we both feel we have a standard that, when applied, will result in safer streets. But at the same time, we still need to measure it. Because if we don't measure it, if we don't determine that, you know, the outcomes are in fact trending in the direction we want them to trend, we may need to reevaluate our standards.
John, when you say "our," when you say "our" policy, you're talking about council's policy? Or are you saying that currently, we're not following the standards that we should be, we have currently?
We, what I'm suggesting is, we don't know. You know, we, we do have a Complete Streets policy. I read it today. I think generally speaking, the policy seems sound. The question in my mind is, is our practice aligned with achieving the outcomes we would expect, given our policy?
Jeff, you're saying we'll have that discussion with the SUDAS?
Well, the Complete Streets policy and the design standards, while related, are two separate animals.
Are we gonna, so do we have time for both?
Sure. We could, we could, we could do high-level overviews of both. What is a Complete Streets policy? And then what are, again, what are our current standards? And where is staff going with our review of those current standards? I'm not prepared to give you a recommendation on road design, new standards, but we can at least tell you where we think we're going. And we have not talked at all about performance standards, but it's something that we can give some thought to and have a dialogue with you about.
Well, I think that from this meeting, I'm hearing you, John, we may need to be thinking about how we craft that, or what are some of the metrics? I mean, maybe it's, we don't necessarily have that guidance yet, it's just us kind of talking about it first.
Yeah, I think what may need to be part of that discussion, which includes the state standards, would be a discussion and presentation regarding, not four, the four standards which were in that memo I sent in March, but at least one that would be more consistent with what that memo referred to as more pedestrian-oriented standards. The SUDAS standards are very auto-oriented. It's kind of a, you know, a roadway that's designed primarily with the function of automobiles in mind. The NACTO standards, for example, are more pedestrian-oriented. So I think it would be useful to, at a minimum, have two, two guidelines as, as part of that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that it would be too difficult, and I looked at Ron and Jason, you know, we could, we could put together a matrix of the umpteen number of design standards that are out there.
There's already a matrix.
And how they compare. We can do that. I'm just, I don't want to suggest to you that we're at the point where we can make a staff recommendation on those road designs. This was more of a introduction to SUDAS, which is more than road design, but a, just a broad introduction to let you know where we're going. You know, if, if council doesn't want to wait for that review and wants to say, "This is the standard we want," that could probably save a lot of time on staff's end in, in doing this. But those are complicated. There's a lot of interwoven parts to those design standards, and we're just not quite ready to make that recommendation yet. So however you want to proceed is fine. I would suggest that the Complete Streets and the road design, we could, we could tackle them in one work session, but I think you need to look at those separately. They get tied together, I think, when it comes to the performance metrics. You want those speaking to each other, but it's going to be two very different reviews.
It sounds to me like we might need to have a follow-up session sometime in the late winter or something like that, after the new council comes into office, February or March.
Yeah, I mean, I think what I was going to say, Jim, too, is I think we start with what you and Jeff have already talked about for the work session in two weeks. And then once we've gone through all of that, we can kind of get a sense of where we, how much more we may or may not feel we need to do after that. And then waiting till after the new council is in place probably makes sense. We've got, we've got plenty of other stuff to do in the meantime.
Okay, does that make sense, Jeff? We can proceed that way. Anybody object? Anybody want to weigh in some more?
I agree.
Okie doke. We'll move to the next topic. Discuss expectations for working with the school district Kirkwood, Iowa Works, labor organizations, and others to explore the feasibility of an industrial arts crafts facility in Iowa City. I know Jeff's had these conversations with the superintendent, and that hasn't led to any apparent opportunities that we could really pursue. But Rocky, I know you have...
Yeah, I would like to keep this on. I, just a couple, a week or so ago, had a very good discussion with Steve Miller and Phil Hemingway, and they had also mentioned Kirk Chaney of the Makerspace. So what I would like to do is, is that, is to keep it on for the purpose of deciding whether we'd like to have a citizen-led committee to come back with a set of recommendations as to some type of facility? I mean, we already have Mr. Chaney's facility is started, and Mr. Miller has followed the Makers movement for a long time, very plugged into it. And I understand, Jim, he actually generated a proposal for you, and I think he would probably put it in one of our work packets. So what I would view it as, that the citizen-led committee would not cost anything, but they would just give us a recommendation as to perhaps where we could start with a much, much smaller envision. Because I think one of the things maybe staff was thinking, like with this type of facility, we're talking big. I think maybe that's sort of what staff was thinking, based upon our failure to be more clear in terms of really what we were looking at. But I think if we would start small, establish the concept, build with the community groups, I think we could at least get some recommendations in terms of where our Makerspace policy should be. One anecdote that Mr. Miller had shared to me, and he was the metals teacher evidently for City High for several years, retired about nine years ago, but the number of employers that he says that, that he's talked to, to talk about the lack of skilled labor in the city of Iowa City, and at least he felt that the Makerspace concept would at least be one small step to move forward on that. But again, the devil's always in the details. And so if we could do a work session on that for purposes of talking about what type of committee we'd like to have, to come back with a set of recommendations, I think would still be really helpful. So I would like to at least keep this on our work session list.
Can you clarify a little bit what you mean by a citizen-led committee?
Well, an ad hoc committee, I guess, is sort of what I'm thinking of. I mean, I don't know, you know, we had had the Racial Justice Committee, and I understand that that had some staff involvement with it, but some relatively small committee between five and seven members. But in terms of exactly how that would function, I think that'd be a good topic of a work session, so we'd be able to get the feedback from staff in terms of what's feasible and what not, and what's not. What I'm thinking is, is that I think they already have put a lot of thought into it in terms of what's feasible. I know there's been at least some conversations with Mr. Chaney, that we could get at least a, at least a memo generating sort of what the next action step should be and what the potential cost for members could be.
And you're thinking initially, this would be a temporary committee?
Yeah.
And maybe that would be it, too?
Yeah. Yeah, and it may be that they come back with a recommendation, and we say, "Look, that's just not, it's not feasible, we don't have the budget for it, it's too big," that sort of thing. But they may come back, and I think this is what's gonna happen, that they'll come back with a relatively modest proposal that's doable, that we can get done and get started and get moving on, to at least get started, and then leave this discussion to a more complicated facility at another day.
What do the rest of you think? And Jeff, I know you should weigh in, do us on this.
I'm just a little confused as far as who you would be gearing this towards. Younger, like kids fresh out of high school, middle-aged, people trying to find another type of position? Because I know there was talk with the bond issue that City High would perhaps reinstitute an industrial arts classroom, which was great, and I just, I wouldn't want to step on the toes of the apprenticeship programs. And there's the plumbing apprenticeship, there's electrical, there's the carpentry, all those kinds of apprenticeship programs, which I'd like to see maybe the schools and the councils in the schools emphasizing that more and working with those trade unions to get young folks interested in that.
And that may be the recommendation, that there should be greater participation with the apprenticeship programs. I talked with Phil Hemingway about it. He certainly didn't think there was any conflict. And in terms of who would be the beneficiary of it, I think anyone interested in industrial education. I know Mr. Miller's been retired now for nine years. He highlighted, actually of all things, that Makerspace in Dubuque, which evidently some of the sisters are getting into making various projects as well. So I don't think that in terms of the, but I think, I mean, hopefully would be students interested in industrial education, whether they're out of high school or that sort of thing. But I think the committee would come back with us, anyone with an interest in that particular topic.
So Eleanor, you have to help me here, because I may be, you know, stepping on some boundaries, but I don't, I guess for me, I think that that's a, I feel like it's a school district issue. Like, I feel like if we're talking about industrial education and thinking about kind of what your point was, Pauline, around, I'm not opposed to it, I guess I'm just trying to think through who, basically whose responsibility. I mean, that's what, that's my main question that keeps coming into my mind, is who, who shoulders responsibility? And my feeling here is, and I'm not necessarily in, this is not my area, industrial ag or industrial education, but I just feel like, you know, this is an issue that I know Director Hemingway has been bringing up publicly at school board meetings, and I don't necessarily know if he's got any traction, whatever the case may be. I guess, I don't, I don't want to battle here between city council and school board and.
The point is, we don't know what that's gonna be. I mean, I would envision, and the committee may come back to that recommendation, would be my thing. They may say that, so.
The only thing that I have with that, Rocky, is that, you know, for any citizen or any resident that wants to bring a particular proposal to us, they would have had to, you know, put considerable legwork behind it before we would move forward on a committee. I mean, for me, I feel like it's almost putting us in a position of wanting us to do the work without them having kind of concrete plans as far as how they want to move forward in that particular way. I think that's where seemingly has failed on the other end, because there isn't really, you know, wanting to do something is great, but how to do it is obviously always gonna be the issue, and I guess I'm just not seeing the how right now. So I mean, I'm, again, I don't want to, you know, somebody to watch this and say I'm not supportive of industrial education. I think frankly, I think it needs to be a consideration from an overarching standpoint with ICAD, because I think Mark Nolte has these conversations every single time about a skilled workforce. The issue is here, I just don't, I don't know if we're the vehicle to move that forward. I'm not saying that we're not, I just want to be concrete about, if we are, why are we compared to some of the other areas?
I guess, I know there's a, just one quick response to that. I mean, the starting point for this is essentially the strategic plan, where we talked about coordination with the other educational institutions. So, you know, I guess a citizen-led committee to come back with a set of recommendations, we may reject all of them and come to that conclusion. I don't think that would be too time-intensive.
I guess, piggybacking kind of went on what Kingsley has said, you know, and who should take the lead on something like this. And I think with all of us, I think I believe that we all support, you know, the skilled trades. We need more people, the apprenticeship programs are having trouble, you know, getting people. I've had some discussions with Jeff on that, of how we could coordinate some things potentially. But I agree with Kingsley that I don't, I don't see that this is necessarily something that the city council should be stepping out and taking the actual lead on. One of my concerns is, in doing that, do we give people the impression that we are gonna be the solution to this incredibly huge problem? I would like to see more along the lines of what Kingsley has said. If there are people in the community that are really committed to this and want to see some kind of facility developed and programming, let them kind of take the initiative, and then, then look to us potentially as a partner, look to the school district potentially as a partner, look to the labor unions potentially as partners. But I think there's certain things that the council maybe shouldn't be taking the lead on, and I think this is one of those. I would certainly welcome hearing from a community group that had kind of figured out some of this stuff and said, "Hey, can we bring these different entities together to help solve this problem?" Then yeah, let's have a discussion and see if there's a reasonable place for the city to be involved in that.
Terry, John? You know, I'll be honest, I haven't, this is sort of an area where I certainly have an interest in the outcome. I think the whole question of improving the competency of our community in terms of industrial arts is critical. But how we get there is a real question to me. I don't really know what role the city has with that. One, I think the apprenticeship opportunities mentioned in the commentary is something that I know Fred Meyer has spoken of, you know, that if we expand some of the, or not expand, but incorporate it into some of the edible landscape projects, some skilled crafts, building landscape structures, things of that sort, which are then serve as apprentice opportunities to Iowa City's youth, that's a role I think the city can play for sure. If we can try to leverage projects that are on city property to create apprenticeship opportunities, I think that's something really worth exploring. But yeah, I'm thinking of, say, the art factory, where there is kind of a group that's working on this, trying to develop, you know, a vision for how to achieve their facility, and in that instance, city council is not playing a role. So I, other than, you know, we're in the loop, but we're not, you know, we're not actually creating a committee or endorsing a committee for that discussion to take place.
Let me mention a couple of things. I think this appears in our strategic plan because of a conversation I had with Phil way back when, and I think I asked to have it put in the strategic plan. I can't remember now, it's too long ago. But subsequently, I had a conversation with both Phil and Steve Miller, as you indicated, Rocky, and Steve, after a few weeks, gave me some written material. I went through it fairly quickly, shared it with Jeff. Jeff, I'm sure, read it, and then subsequently, Jeff has had some conversations with the superintendent. And it's my understanding that there's not much interest at the school district level in terms of proceeding. So I'm hearing what Susan and Kingsley have said about who really should take the lead on something like this. And it was never my intention that Iowa City would take the lead. What I hoped we could do is collaborate with some other entities to ensure that some facility, generally speaking, of this type would be made available in Iowa City. But I never intended for us to take the lead, so I'm not really sure how we can proceed.
But again, I think the committee doesn't necessarily mean we're taking the lead. I mean, it may be, it may identify other entities, it may identify a nonprofit.
I think by us setting up a committee, we're taking the lead.
Yeah, all right, well.
I think we could invite them to put a little more flesh on the bone, so to speak, recognizing it needs to be a collaborative endeavor.
And press the new, where is mine? And press the new school board as well. I mean, I think that's, ultimately, there's a new school board, school board members are a new school board generated. I feel like this is something that they could or should take on, and focusing on some of the comments that even Pauline had identified that came out of the bond discussion as well. That's kind of that, going back to that accountability. I, yeah, I just don't want, I agree with Susan as well, I don't want people to be looking at us for this, and I think this is a systemic issue, which I think we need to, I just think the school needs to be involved more. I think the school needs to do it, honestly, frankly.
It's a national problem. It's not just Iowa City. There was just a report on this week that I watched, that the trades are very, but a lot of it has to do with the unemployment rate, too. It's so low that the people that are left, it's tough to get people to step up or change a job to go into these trades. So, yeah, I understand what you're saying, that we need to get some more information, but once again, we really can't be the lead.
Well, okay, I think the sense of the council is pretty clear, but I do think, tell me if I'm wrong, we would be eager to collaborate with Kirkwood, the school district, labor unions, et cetera, to help make that kind of facility happen.
I would qualify that, that we would be willing, we would be very eager to consider collaborating. Again, the devil's in the details on that, I just.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, if it was a $12 million facility, which is not the case, but yeah. Okay. Next item is, review the child data snapshot and discuss related strategies with local stakeholders.
So this is mine. I told Jeff already, I think in the email, to remove it. Basically, it goes back to our current rating system and just making sure we're looking at metrics. And I thought that the child data snapshot provided an interesting metric that we needed to pay attention to, but if we're already working towards that in lieu of the strategic plan, remove.
Any objection to that?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll do that. The next item is to discuss creation of an ad hoc committee on social justice and racial equity.
So, this is mine as well.
Before you say it, Jeff notes that we have a city manager's roundtable, and that we could perhaps officially designate it, maybe rename it, and give it an explicit charge.
So I was just gonna say, yes, I agree. That's, it's kind of, I remember us having this discussion during the strategic planning session, and I think ultimately, I wanted something different out of the roundtable discussion. Not to say that the roundtable discussion is bad, I just wanted something different as it relates to social justice and racial equity. And so, I think for me, it needs to be removed from the list, and I think I need to be more clear about what I mean by that, because I don't think I gave a good, a good description as far as what I had in mind moving forward. I mean, some of that was in regards to our social justice and racial equity grant, having a committee that we reviewed some of those proposals as they put forth. But that goes through what committee, Jeff?
Human rights.
Human rights. And so that got switched over a little bit, so there was not a need to do a separate committee now, and so now the reasoning behind having it is a little bit different. And this is kind of out of the Seattle model, but they don't also have a city manager's roundtable. And so, I would, I would agree with kind of the recommendation from Jeff and staff as far as considering a city council liaison and maybe renaming the group. But I also want to make sure that it's something that we talk to them about as well, it's not something that, you know, we just do. So, I would say, for me at least, removing this and just kind of reconsidering the city manager roundtable.
I guess one thing I want to be clear on in terms of, I guess, how I view this, I think the roundtable is effective in part because it's informal. It's flexible, people are coming and going, we'll get new faces at times, and people will drop off for a couple of months and then come back in. So I still would want to keep it informal, which is why just having a council liaison to that, I think makes sense, but in reality, anything that comes up at that group, if they're working on things, if it needs to filter up to the city council, it certainly will. Much of the focus that we have on that is operational aspects, parks, libraries, senior center, we get into those types of discussions, but certainly as community issues come up or as other issues are identified, having a council liaison on the committee, I don't think hurts at all, and plugs into some of those more detailed discussions that we're having.
So it would not be as formal as something like the Human Rights Commission?
Correct.
But would it have an official title? We'd have to probably get recommendations about what its charge should be? You make an allusion to that.
Yeah, we really don't have a chair of the group. Stephanie Bowers oversees it, she programs the agenda, she talks to the group. We survey the group once or twice a year to see what topics they're interested in, but there is no charge in terms of a scope, there's no charge. So if there's a specific charge that the council wants, then I think you're probably getting into that formal policy where now you're getting into open meetings and things of that nature.
I think there's, I think there's a lot of benefit to the informal aspect of the roundtable. I think it, and I, my one question about a council liaison is, and Jeff, you'll have to ask, you know, answer this, or think about it in light of the people that are coming to those meetings. Does the presence of a counselor impact the discussions? And if that's gonna impact, you know, the openness, and if you and staff have built relationships there, and if having a counselor there is gonna have any kind of negative impact, or have people hold back at all in terms of open and honest discussions, then I think we need to take that into consideration before we would, you know, consider doing it.
I don't think so. I really don't. Now, if it gets to the point where there's a specific charge and it triggers open meetings and there's minutes being taken and, then yes, it probably does. Then I'd probably have that concern, but a single council liaison, no. And I think it'd be appropriate that the council liaison report on, you know, high level, here's what we talked about at the roundtable during these meetings, so that the full council knows.
It meets once a month typically?
Yeah, I think typically, we probably, probably about nine or 10 times a year would be my guess. We skip a couple of months.
I know, I've sat in on, I don't know, probably on average, one out of every three roundtables?
Yeah.
And, yeah, I never say anything really, but I don't think the conversation's been influenced by me being there.
Just want to raise a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm supportive. I mean, I don't know if we really need to rename it. If we're gonna keep it as an informal, I think we want to be careful that we don't rename it something that makes it sound like it's more formal and is policy-oriented, that misleads people. So, I don't know, I kind of like the city manager's roundtable.
So, kind of, this is one of the issues, and I'm more kind of throwing this out from a question standpoint. So I think about kind of, you know, environmental justice, or how we couple sustainability with social justice. And then I wonder where that goes, because I think that there's a part of that, I think, that's focused from the climate action committee standpoint, but then I feel like there's, the conversation's so detail-oriented, and so, is that something that that group could take on? Because they have, you said they've taken on multiple tasks in the past.
Yeah, I think we're having a roundtable tomorrow, right? And one of the topics is the climate, an update. I think Ashley's gonna provide an update on the climate plan, the climate committee and their work. So that's exactly what we try to do. We just try to work them into the current topics at City Hall, make sure they're aware of what's going on, they know how to participate. If they've got feedback at that particular lunch, they can provide it there, and Ashley and Brenda can take it back to the committee.
So I'm basically, based on that, I'm just gonna say, just remove it altogether. I mean, I think it's appropriate, kind of how it stands, remove it from this list, not the city council, not the city manager's roundtable, just from the list in general.
I thought you were gonna say something about the name.
No, I'm okay with the name, also.
The name being social justice and racial equity?
No, I'm, city manager's roundtable, just leaving it as is.
Okay, what are the rest, and it's not a huge thing, I don't think, but the rest of you okay with just continuing that name?
Concur.
Do you think we should appoint a city council liaison to it?
No. I don't think so. I think, I mean, you talked about sitting in on meetings. I mean, I need to sit on some meetings, I mean, I think that we can leave it at that, honestly.
As long as there's just one there.
Yeah. If anybody has an interest, just let me know, and I can, I mean, I can plug you in and let you know, hey, we're meeting.
Yeah, I just got on the mailing list, so to speak, Stephanie tells me. Yeah, I just got on the mailing list, so to speak, and Stephanie tells me. Okay, well, I hear that we're gonna keep the name, we're gonna not, not appoint a council member, and we're gonna remove this particular topic from the pending list. That's what I hear.
Yep.
Okay, but there's one little bit that I think we would encourage, and that is, if they have recommendations that pertain to, I don't know, social justice, racial equity, and stuff being discussed by the manager, city manager's roundtable, we want to know about them.
Understood.
Next, joint meeting with the telecommunications commission.
So, I guess I'd like to take the lead on this one, if that's okay, since I think this was generated by my original discussion of municipal broadband. You know, I think, you know, municipal, broadband infrastructure is probably one of the most critical issues in the community, and I think it's very important that we get together with the telecommunications commission, simply to identify where we are right now in terms of our municipal broadband policy. We did have the IMON, what is it, two or three years ago? We're bringing a new provider. And so, I think it's important that we do that, and whether it's municipal, private, or anything else, just to have that discussion. It's certainly a topic that I hear a lot about, certainly from time to time, we get complaints in terms of where we are, in terms of where, if our infrastructure is where it needs to be. So, again, this would fall into the category of, of a relatively targeted meeting with the telecommunications commission, simply to see where we are. I would like, in the future, and this is one of the things I'm gonna push at our strategic plan, for a feasibility study of municipal broadband, because I'm not ready to give up on that particular topic. But I think that would be a second step. I think the first step is, as we recognized last spring, to have this discussion with the telecommunications commission. And if the report that we get from them is, we're doing everything we can, and we think we're where we need to be, I think I'd reconsider that request for a feasibility study. But I think it's important that we identify that infrastructure, because it is a critical need that the community faces.
I agree. I think we ought to keep it on the pending list, but we, we deferred it mainly because we didn't have a full commission. And to the best of my knowledge, we still don't, but I'm not sure about that. Kelly, do you know?
One vacancy?
Yeah, I'd much rather have a full committee.
Yes.
To be fair to them, for, for one reason. But otherwise, I'd like to engage in that conversation with them. Any other opinions about this? I see a lot of nodding heads, but.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what we're gonna do? So, once the commission's full, I don't know, and after the full commission's been there for a couple of months or something, they've had a chance to meet each other, get to know each other a little bit, maybe we can, you know, schedule a meeting with them. Okay? All right. Next, discuss possible changes to on-street parking in core neighborhoods. So, Jeff's recommendation is that we keep it on the pending list until staff review is complete, and we've had some conversations, and John, Jeff and I, and staff have had one conversation in particular, and I'm sure the staff has gone into more detail. So, keep it on the list.
Do we have an approximate timeframe as to when we're gonna do the?
Good question. We have, what, five meetings or something like that before the end of the year? I don't know if we.
I thought we were gonna do it in October.
Well, we've, I don't think we'd be ready for your next meeting, and we had the SUDAS discussion there, and, and we were gonna update you on Gateway and a couple of the bigger capital projects at your next meeting. We've got LUSK scheduled for November 21st, so I think we could shoot for that first meeting in November, which would be November 6th, I think that's the Monday meeting. Kent and Ron and Jason, does that sound reasonable?
Sounds good to me.
Want to aim for November 6th on that?
Yeah.
Okay, and the last one is code review in light of LUSK Avenue, and this is currently scheduled for November the 21st.
Cool.
Done with this review of pending work session topics?
That's great.
All right. Well done, everybody. Next topic, clarification of agenda items. I'd like to make a request, see what the rest of you think. Item 4D4, 4D4, that's the amendment regarding engineering consultant services for the Clinton Burlington intersection. It's in the consent calendar. I'd like to pull it from the consent calendar and ask Kent or Ron to briefly describe what's, why, you know, where we are on it, and what the, what the intent is with regard to this particular resolution and amendment, just so the public can hear that, so they can have a sense of what's gonna happen with that intersection.
Does, does it need to be pulled from consent, or can we have that conversation during consent?
Any council member can.
Did you say anyone can, is that what you said?
Yeah, any council member can. Or, you're right, you can have the discussion as part of the consent calendar, too. It's just if you want to vote on it separately, it needs to be removed from the.
Yeah, I don't think we need to vote on it separately, so.
Yeah, just the discussion.
Okay, so if you can help me remember, then when we get into discussion of the consent calendar, Ron, I'll ask you to come up and talk about that. Okay? Okay, anything else in the, you know, clarification of agenda items topic?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, hearing no, no further comments about that, we'll move to the info packet discussion, the September 21 packet. I thought you might touch on that.
I know, everybody thinks I only care about money. I care about money because what we can do with the money. Unfortunately, I'm not surprised about this. You know, the property tax cuts, the, the governor talking about ending the backfill, we're gonna, fortunately, we've got ourselves in a good position with building our reserves, building our emergency fund. But I think in another two to three years, we may really be finding ourselves headed in the other direction in terms of having to either raise our taxes or potentially cut services, depending upon what the state does, so.
Des Moines' response was interesting, I thought.
I forget, I read this so long ago.
They did have to raise the tax.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately.
So, there was a response in the Des Moines Register a few days ago by somebody, I don't remember who, I should have made a copy of the, of the guest opinion. But the gist of the response was, cities are complaining too much. They say that we should be really worried because our property tax revenues will be cut, and therefore, services will have to be cut, or taxes will have to be increased. And this, the person who wrote this said, no, it's really not gonna be the case. In fact, if you look at the, the data, property tax revenues in general in the, the major cities in Iowa have been increasing despite cuts in property tax mandated by the state. So, I'm not claiming I agree with that at all, but I, I think we, we need to have a response to that in mind, and I should have printed out a copy and shared it with you before the meeting, but I didn't. Do you know what I'm referring to, Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the author is probably referring to, you, you need to look at how tax bases are growing in, in the cities. And despite the cuts, whether it's multifamily cuts, or the threat of removal of backfill, has the taxable value in cities continued to increase.
Because property tax valuations are increasing.
Right, yeah, valuations are going on, there's, there's continued growth, whatever the case may be, and the answer's gonna differ from city to city. We're fortunate in that we've experienced some growth, and that there's high demand for development in this region, but in talking with a lot of other cities, they're not nearly as fortunate as we are to have, have the demand for growth that we, we are having right now. So, it's hard to put a blanket statement on how these, these decisions to cut taxes or to remove backfills affects cities, because it affects everyone a little bit differently. There was some speculation at a recent Metro Coalition meeting, and you may have heard me mention that before, but Metro Coalition is an informal group of the 10 largest cities of Iowa. We collaborate on legislative priorities and whatnot, and there was some speculation that perhaps those cities that have experienced growth might lose their backfill, and the state would keep the backfill for those cities that have not had growth in their tax base at that time. So, you know, whether it's an even phase out, or some sort of, you know, again, removal for those that don't need it, quote unquote, we don't really know, but clearly, the conversation has shifted from it's protected to the cities need to come to the table and be a part of the solution, which means it's gone.
I, I was glad that Jeff, I think it was you, that had shared the article, because seeing the figures was really an eye-opener, and it made me realize why Susan has been harping about this all year long, because other cities. For eight years. Yeah, not just this year, I guess, okay. Because other cities are feeling the pinch, too, and, and are afraid that they would have to increase property taxes or cut services. But I was happy to see in the article, comment from our own representative, Dave Jacoby from Corleville, talking about it being the worst tax policy bill, and, and that the backfill is a promise that was made to local governments, and he wants to see it honored, and, and it always helps to have an advocate. And we, we should thank him for, for whatever he can do to, to help with that, to keeping that backfill in there, and, and obviously, as Susan has told us, keep on our toes.
How far below the, one thing I found interesting in the article was this, the general fund levy limit, and how many cities are already at the limit or in emergency levy status. Where are we with respect to that?
We are maxed out on our 810 levy, which is what it's referring to here. We do not use the emergency levy at all.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
We are maxed.
Okay, any, any further discussion about that topic?
Not IP, I actually have a comment about IP5.
Okay.
I just really wanted to thank Simon and the staff for the wonderful work that they did, you know, and we have these conversations up here, it's always nice to see the memo come back, I think really capturing the spirit of the discussion. So, I thought it was a very well-done memo, and looking forward to this, you know, ongoing budgeting process. Very good work.
Yeah, yeah, but Simon, 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 I keep hearing about Simon, like, jumping off the side of a roof, a building, and things like that, and rappelling down or something, I don't know. It's getting all this publicity. There's a great photograph of you in the, the staff chat thing, yeah. Really fun to see.
IP4, I, I was glad to see that article, too, the buses one, because I think when I brought that up as a possible budget item, I think people looked at me like I had two heads or something, like, why would you want to do this, or change our bus system? But there are many points in the article that kind of rang true to our community and our corridor, as far as the changing demographics. We are growing, we're spreading, east, west, north, south, and I think our bus routes and times haven't kept up with that. And people complain about the congestion all the time in the city, and I think if we got more ridership, although that's something would be helpful to know, I don't think we've ever seen data as far as our ridership, or maybe from the city, if we've heard anything from transit on the ridership, it'd be good to know. And we also had gotten a letter, again, about the shelters, and I know we are doing something about that, but it's, it's kind of late in coming for that person.
Saw Mary Gravitt getting on the bus just today.
Right. But we maybe could consider consultant. There's always talk about consultant, and as this article mentioned about consultants, and we've used this method, as we've talked about today, for, for many other projects, and together with even public input, and a consultant, it would be money well-spent, I think, to, to at least take a look at it.
You'll see that in our budget recommendation to you, we'll, we'll include consultant dollars for this purpose.
Good.
Do we, do we talk to the university in terms of their CAMBUS routes? Because, I mean, I've begun to think that if CAMBUS were to run down through Riverfront Crossings to, say, the new city park, that would be a wonderful thing. I mean, CAMBUS is, its headways are like what you would expect in a major city. And, and that, if we could have strong connectivity to an area where we are really promoting in terms of development, I think that would really help activate Riverfront Crossings.
Yeah, our staffs do, do talk and collaborate quite a bit, gets channeled through the MPO, those discussions do quite often, but I don't know if there's ever been discussions with CAMBUS taking off-campus routes. They, they do cover some off-campus areas, but they tend to be en route to Oakdale, or en route to Riverlanding, where there's other university facilities.
I guess, I think of Riverfront Crossings as being de facto student housing, you know, in that regard. It is part of the campus, maybe not formally, but many people who will live down there will be part of the university.
Just like kind of an, an interesting aside, Ames, I know, their, like, CAMBUS is effectively their city transit as well, so just kind of, in terms of precedent of university towns collaborating with the cities, like, I think it's an interesting model to look at and even copy.
Okay, any other topics for September 21?
Oh, I just wanted to, the IP3, the Amazon HQ2 wishlist, I, I found that very encouraging. I felt many of the initiatives council is taking, the city is taking, are reflected in that wishlist. And then the notion of economic development is about growing from within, as sort of an overarching philosophy, is something that I think, you know, we're doing well in that regard.
I noticed how it emphasized the importance of, as it describes it, connected and sustainable place-making, which is really what we're trying to do.
Cultural diversity.
And cultural diversity, promoting an inclusive culture, and having a diverse population. So, yeah. Let's go to September 28. That fact sheet, thank you.
Yes.
On IP number six, the joint meeting agenda items, so Kelly asked us to identify any possible items that we would want to have discussed at the joint meeting. And I'm embarrassed to admit, I didn't think about it, so.
Makerspace policy.
Yeah.
Could do.
Yeah.
So, we could just put it on the agenda, and usually, you know, how things usually go, since we put it on the agenda, we would have to talk about it, right?
Who's gonna lead that discussion? Are you looking for staff to lead that discussion, or is that a?
Just like not me.
I'll need some help on that.
Well, I'll, well, I'll, I'll request that Steve submit that written material as a starting point, how about that? He'd submitted a memo to you.
Yeah. Well, yeah, he, he gave me some written material, yeah.
Yeah, so that might be a starting point for the discussion.
For the others on the joint, in the joint meeting to read as well? And, and what, during the meeting, you would speak briefly about it?
I think just to gauge whether there's any interest at all, and if we get glassy eyes and say no, then.
Okay.
We'll have to reevaluate that. It would just be a short.
It's for us, Jeff.
Yeah.
But you'll ask, you.
I'll ask Steve, yes.
Any other topics for the joint meeting? What's hot, what's coming up?
Well, we have the radio show. The radio show.
Well, no, I'm trying, want to see if there are any other joint.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Items.
Missed them.
We're drawing a blank. Okay, KXIC.
October 18th is what I have, I'd like to request.
I'll take November 1st, I'll take November 15th.
Hold on, Kelly's gotta write all those down. Are, are you up to date with the three of them? Okay.
What, what's in October? I, just to bring this up, when I was on this last Wednesday, he asked if we could bring our student liaison.
Right.
To one of the meeting, or one of the, the talks, and so, I'll take what everyone's coming up in the next couple of weeks, and if that works out, I'd like Benjamin to go with me.
Yeah, we're, we're free any Wednesday, so.
Okay. So, Kelly, there are only three dates I can do, because of other things I'm committed to doing. I can only do it on the 11th, the 25th, or November the 1st. So, I'm happy to do any one of those, but.
So, 25th, I, if you want to do the 11th, I'll do the 25th.
Okay, and you'll do it with Ben?
Yep.
Okay, does that sound all right to you?
That's October 25th.
So, I'll do the 11th. So I'll do the 11th, right?
Has the 15th been taken in November?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd do 8th.
Everybody has at least one?
I don't think, Kingsley's doing mine tomorrow.
Yeah.
So what do you have left?
December 6.
November 22nd, November 29th, and December 6.
I'll do the 22nd.
I'll take the 29th.
Do we need December 6 then?
Yes.
I'll do that. Kind of a farewell.
Fareway. There you go.
Just give them all December.
Yeah, just what I needed for my December. A little busy then.
Ask them if you could do the show.
Yeah, the whole show.
Sometimes I do.
Kelly, right before our meeting, you and I talked about inserting department heads.
Told me I can just keep coming.
Hold on, everybody. Right before our meeting started, Kelly and I had talked about something we had discussed as a council, I don't know, several meetings ago, about enabling department heads to appear in this sequence. So it'd be good if somebody would say, okay, I'll forego my opportunity and make space for a department head.
If you can find somebody for the 29th, I mean, it's up to you.
Or, you know, we can come with you too. You can, particularly if there's a topic you want to address, that it would be helpful to have a staff member there to support you to get into more of the details. We can do it that way too. However you all want to do it.
So who wants to come tomorrow?
What are you talking about?
Rent abatement's going to be a huge topic.
Well, you're on tomorrow, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm on tomorrow.
We're switching because of the conference.
You're asking whether a...
Do you want the staff to come tomorrow? I can see what I can do.
Dennis Fox, that's too good.
I think it's... How many staff people are you all...
They're all starting to wander out the door now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty short notice.
You're all by yourself, Kingsley.
How about the 11th? That's my gig, so on the 11th, somebody could join me.
Okay, is that October 11th or November?
Yeah, October 11th.
October.
October 11th.
November 8th.
And I don't know who would come with me. I don't know if it'd be Eleanor, or Jeff, or Tracy, or John, or I don't know who.
Well, we can talk tomorrow, and I don't know how this typically works. Do you submit to KXIC what you want to talk about, or do they...
Yes, just when you walk in the door. When you walk in the door, right.
So if you send one of the department heads, that's what they're going to talk about that day.
Well, it would be easy enough for us to, for each, just based on time of year and what's been on the council packets, to develop a list of three or four bullet points and share that with you before you head into the meeting, give you some talking points. We can work on that on our end.
It's a pretty complicated topic, tough to talk about on the radio, you know, in the space of 12 minutes or something.
Which topic?
Sorry, rent...
Oh.
Well, no, I'm sorry, not rent abatement. I was thinking about the whole neighborhood stabilization topic when I said that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I always think it's better to just forego and have a staff member, if they're... I always think it's better for us to just forego and have a staff member go to talk about a key area within a department. Because to Jim's point, really, yeah, it's only 10 minutes.
You know...
I always get about 18, because I never shut up. In and out.
You know, I agree. I think it'd be better to have staff members, department heads periodically appear.
So maybe let's do like a once a month, for now.
That's too much. I was thinking, two out of the next nine, so that seven council members do their thing, and then interspersed would be a couple department heads.
I'm sharing my first one with Ben in the liaison, so that's kind of taking one of those, so.
We can do November 8th.
So October 11th and November 8th?
Well, no, I guess I was backing off from the October 11th thing. So, you know, if the idea is to have the department head there by herself or himself, then it'd be best that, you know, be clear about what dates that would occur. So you just suggested a date, right?
Yeah, just, I won't do November 8th and then have that be a department one.
Yeah, so it could be on November 8th, and Jeff, you could choose the department head to do that. And then it'd be good if we...
Yeah, I've got the first.
Which I think is fine for, I mean, basically, if every time we do this, we reserve one of them for department head, that would basically get at what you're trying to do, Jim.
Yeah, we'd have to look nine...
Yeah, roughly.
Nine KXIC interviews at a time.
Super soaker. All right, so the staff will take November 8th.
Okay.
Correct. Everything else is programmed?
Yep.
And if council at any point in the future want staff to come along to talk about a particular topic, let us know, and if you want help coming up with a list of topics to talk about, let us know.
Okay, good. All right, can we move on to our last topic, which is new for work sessions? Council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees. Let me kind of model at least what I had in mind by describing this Convention and Visitors Bureau meeting on September the 21st, because I'm a member of the board. So at that meeting, Josh reported that the Fry Fest and the Cyclo Cross World Cup were both great successes in September, and that the World Cup event had proceeded much more smoothly this year. Luckily, they didn't have a thunderstorm that kind of wiped out everything on one of the nights. He also pointed to a few forthcoming events, something called Grand Gable on October the 1st, also World Cup Wrestling next April, Run Crandic, a marathon that's going to take place on April the 29th of next year, and that's going to go, listen up, Kingsley, because I want you to run, that's going to go from Newbo in Cedar Rapids to Kennick Stadium, and there's going to be a party at Big Grove afterwards.
Are you ready?
Am I ready? I also reported that Iowa City, as I think you all know, applied to be a stop in next summer's RagBri event, and if the application is approved, the bicyclists are very likely to stop overnight here on one day in late July. So we'll have to see whether the application gets approved. So anyhow, it was a typical meeting, and that's the kind of stuff that is typically reported. Who else? Maybe we can start with Rockne.
I have a really good update. So I'm on the City of Literature Board, and from October 8th through October 15 is the Iowa City Book Festival, and people can find out everything that's going to happen at John Kenyon continues to do a fantastic job, fully bringing in this concept of really what it means to be a UNESCO City of Literature, and the work that he and the board have done is just incredible. So I encourage everyone to check out all those events, various volunteer opportunities, and it's going to be a lot of fun, and it's going to be Iowa City at its best.
Yeah, I want to add on that, add to that just a little bit. Sadek Mohammed, who is the Director of Baghdad City of Literature, is going to be here and will be speaking one of the panels. So I'm pretty excited about that, and I look forward to seeing Sadek again. And also, a poet I met while flying back from Burlington, Vermont, is a Belgian Palestinian poet, and I had a fabulous conversation with her on the plane, and I'm sure she's going to make, be reading some poetry during the book festival. Yeah, anyway, Terry.
The last, I just had a paratransit meeting, but it was back in August, so I don't have a lot to report on that. My last meeting will be probably in, I think it's toward the end of November, so I will be reporting on that, and then we need to appoint a new person to that committee, because that'll be my last paratransit meeting. So I'll report on that, and then I don't know whether Pauline would be interested in that, or you can appoint when you have to do that, so.
Mr. Botchway.
So no new update, so I'm the Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee, no new update. There's a separate subcommittee that's been doing some work around some data collection in regards to, I think, work that was probably discussed or talked about about a year and a half ago, around kind of a coordinated effort around our different jurisdictions as far as relevant data. Some of that was in regards to the police, but they, we had talked about pretty extensively that the Iowa City Police Department does a really good job collecting some of the information. Some of our other municipalities don't necessarily collect the same information, so it was tough to have that kind of apples-to-apples comparison from a kind of county-level standpoint. But basically, they hired a person to, you know, kind of review what, you know, I would say are nexus points within the kind of adjudication process where we see or we seek some disproportionality that happens. This is kind of along the ways of, along the lines of some of the work that Latasha Deloche has done with the DMC Committee Disproportionate Minority Contact, and so I don't have any information, because we haven't met in a while, but I can, I'll present something next council meeting, but that's where it stands right now. They hired somebody and they're looking at those data points.
Susan?
I had a number of meetings with the Behavioral Access Center, both at the Steering Committee level and the Governance Committee. I would say we're making some good progress on trying to get some of the details worked out as to potential management of the facility, partnerships between whoever might manage that, and nonprofits that are already doing a lot of that type of work in the community. And basically, if we can get some of those details pulled together, then I think the Governance Committee is going to be in a better position to actually come back to our councils and the board supervisors to actually start talking hard money for a facility. So we certainly have asked, you know, to put a placeholder in our budget for some of that, and we've encouraged everybody else to please do the same. So I'm hoping that we've got an important meeting coming up, the first part of November, that will kind of clarify or at least bring together more of the details that we need, and so I'm hoping by the first of the year that we'll be seeing some real progress. So just, there's a lot, a lot of details to work out, so.
Okay.
But we're making progress.
Good deal.
John?
Well, many of us are on the MPO JC Board. We had a meeting on September 20th. I wouldn't say anything earth-shattering took place at that meeting, it was mostly housekeeping, I would say. One thing coming up will be this question of the federal aid swap in Iowa whereby state funding could replace federal funding on certain infrastructure projects. That's something council may be interested in looking at more carefully.
As you know, I'm the council rep to the Invest Health Program, which ladies, Tracy included, did a great job of giving a presentation on it, so if you don't remember, it's 50 cities across the country received a planning grant from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the Reinvestment Fund to work together, bringing together a diverse team of folks that normally wouldn't have worked together, to come up with solutions to bettering health and quality of life in particularly lower-income neighborhoods in their community. And I'm pleased that our Iowa City group has recently received a lot of media attention. You may have seen it, Channel 9 News interviewed us. We were trying to have a meeting, and they called Tracy and said, we want to interview you, and before we knew it, they showed up at the Java House, right there with their camera and everything, and did an interview, but it was, they did a really lovely piece and showed it on the 9 o'clock news, and Tracy did a good job, and Vicky did a good job of talking about it. But also, the University of Iowa publication did an article about it, I think, which spurred the Channel 9 interview, as well as the Invest Health Group itself, in their recent newsletter to all 50 of the cities, highlighted the Iowa City group and what we've done, and I think we've accomplished quite a bit. We've engaged the residents to participate, and so they are some of our stakeholders also, as well as mental health groups and the hospitals, and we've got a lot of projects that we're working on that we're excited about. I think in some of our minutes from the Housing Commission, talked about the Healthy Homes Initiative, which Tracy's been a big part of that, a partnership with many groups, Remed Clinic, College of Nursing, and let's see, the school-based, Iowa City school-based clinics to provide in-home asthma education, go into the homes, and also the $75,000 grant through the Housing Trust Fund to help improve if they, when they go into the homes and they find that there's moisture or mold or carpet that's, you know, we've found that carpet is a big instigator for asthma attacks, so, you know, those kinds of things. So we're really excited about that. We're hoping to do a walking and socialization program, because a lot of the folks said they didn't know their neighbors, and they weren't just getting out and about or anything, and we've got some really fun plans to do that, get them out and about, and even maybe get them to walk to the neighborhood IV and meet with the dietitian and learn about healthy foods and those kinds of things, and that's really fun. And we can't take claim to the bike program, but a lot of the children, the 15 children that were involved in getting the free bikes, the Free Wheels program, were part of our, were members of our community, so I think that's going to be a big plus too, as far as increasing their health and getting them out and about too, so. So that's good. So we have a, we do our national convenings, but we also have pod convenings with just some of the committees, or some of the cities, and we, Tracy and I are going to Henderson, Nevada in a few weeks, and it's going to be community engagement is the theme, and I think we're right up the alley on that and do really well with that. And then our final national convening is in New Orleans, you know, it's been, it's been a tough committee to be on.
How come you got on this committee?
Las Vegas, and New Orleans, and Denver, but that theme is December 57th, celebration of accomplishments so far and taking plans to the next level. So even though the funding will end in December, we are going to plan to continue and continue bonding with the stakeholders and folks that we've been working with and have our plans. It's been fun.
Excellent. Thanks, everybody. It's really fun to hear about what everybody's doing. Okay, I guess we're done for our work session tonight. We'll reconvene at 7:00 PM for the formal meeting.